It is rise in time of 6:47, so I will call the November 9th Cedar Springs Public Schools School Board Meeting to order, and if we can all rise where we're at and will join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're back, and can we have a roll call, please? Tracy?
Yes, Trustee Bowser here. Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
I just got a text and he is out of town, so we'll mark that as an excused absence.
Okay. Secretary Slager here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Trent may try to dial in, so just for an awareness, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we have established a quorum, so we'll move forward with the adoption of the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore, pass. Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted as presented, and that brings us to gratitudes. And I'm going to jump in first with, I'm grateful for our three board members that were in our election, and they were elected, which is Matt Schaffner, Shannon Vanderhyde, and Trent Gilmore, signing up for another four years. So thank you for your experience and your service. And you ran a big ballot. How fun was that?
Super fun.
Lots of votes cast. I was like, wow, that's a lot of votes. That might be more than I've had in all of the other ones combined.
There you go.
Somehow Shannon got the most votes. I don't know how that's possible, but nice job, Shannon.
I, I think it's Vanderhyde Ford.
That's all right. That works. So, thank you for being on the ballot. Any other gratitudes anybody wants to share?
I'll hop in there. Just grateful to be able to attend the basketball game, even though it was a little different, but still, hey, kids are playing ball and having fun. So grateful for that.
Yes, I will second that, and also just grateful, again, to the administrative team, just making that transition with our high schoolers to remote learning. I know there was so much, so much planning that went into that, but as a parent, and from, you know, just that perspective, it seemed really smooth, and that I know was not because it just happened that way. I know that's because of all the behind-the-scenes work, so, so thank you.
To piggyback on that, just to reiterate, it was very clear what needed to happen and what we were doing today versus what we were doing tomorrow. I, I appreciate so much how much background work must have gone into that.
Yeah, I too am thankful for the, this, the administrative team and the teachers and support staff, who, just to continue to show up day after day with a refreshed spirit and a willingness to venture off into those uncharted waters and just do their best with a steadfast focus on doing everything, everything that they can to make a difference in the lives of our students and their coworkers and our families in Cedar Springs. So it is remarkable, their efforts.
Agree. Thank you.
And I think I, I'd be remiss without jumping in and adding as well. I just, I'm so thankful for Jen and Stacy and the direction that you've given for the teachers, and Scott, your guidance and leadership over the group. Thank you so much, all of you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and we will move on to the High School Student Council Report. And I'm wondering if the iPhone that is an attendee might be Kyra or Haley.
So I'll unmute their mic, and if the iPhone is Carla or Kira or Haley.
No.
Your mic is open? No?
Okay. All right. Nope, either one. All right. So they're on virtual, so that's understandable. Not twenty s. No problem. We'll move on to the consent items that were put before us in our board book, so I would entertain a motion at this time.
I just want to point out that in the minutes, my last name goes back and forth between a capital H and a lowercase h. It's not consistent, but it is lowercase h, and it's not a huge deal, but like going forward, it's all just lowercase. We'll fix that. This might be Mr. LaHayes' last time of doing minutes.
And they've been so flawless, but now I, ah, hey, Shannon, I'll get it fixed before it gets signed. My apologies.
Not a big deal. Other than that, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure. I support that.
Okay. Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The consent item is approved as presented, bringing us to discussion. And first up, we have a financial update with Chris LaHaye, but you might want to have the auditor go first. You said you might want to interchange that a little bit.
Yep, I'm gonna invite Jason Mitchell from Vradavell Hafner to step in and go first, so we can let him move on with his evening if he would so wish. So, Jason, the floor is yours, sir.
Great, thank you, Chris, and just wanted to say I appreciate our firm having the opportunity to serve the district again this year. It's been a real pleasure. Each of you should have two issued documents. One is the audited financial statements, and another is a two-page letter. Does everybody have access to those?
Jason, they do not have them with them tonight. We do have them at the district office, but they're not in their hands as we are remote.
Okay, then I'm going to modify my presentation a little bit. So instead of walking you through some of the details that you could follow along, I'm just going to give you the real general highlights, and then I think you'll get the flavor of how the audit went, if that sounds all right with everybody.
Yes.
As part of the audit, we issue an independent auditor's report, which is our opinion on the financial statements, and the opinion states that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. Now, that is our highest level of assurance. That means that we are not aware of any material misstatements in the issued document, and it's what we commonly refer to as a clean audit opinion. Also, in the financial statements, there was a big change in the accrued liabilities amount this year, which had to do with accruing four pay periods versus only three pay periods last year. But when we go into the income statement, the one thing that I did want to point out is that there was a significant increase in state revenue this year, almost 1.5 million. And in addition, we also had a new major fund this year, the 2019 refunding bonds. And then there was also a refunding this year of $6,100,000, and that was used primarily to pay down the school loan revolving fund. There was a significant subsequent event that happened after year-end, and that was the voter-approved $68 million bond proposal for district-wide building and property improvements. And outside of the financial audit, we do a separate special audit referred to as a single audit that covers the expenditures of the district's federal grant awards during the year. And just to talk through the results of that audit, the opinions were also unmodified or clean for the single audit. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified in the single audit. The district qualified as a low-risk auditee again this year, and there were no financial statement findings as a result of the single audit. So overall, the single audit results are as clean as they could be. Turning over to the two-page letter that we issue on our letterhead, that document is just a general communication to those charged with governance, which would be the Board of Education, and just gives a lot of high-level standard communications that we are required as auditors to communicate to the Board of Education. And the one significant thing that I wanted to point out regarding the qualitative aspects of accounting practices is that the district did implement a new Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement this year, number 84, which was regarding fiduciary activities, and that moved your Student Activities Agency Fund into a special revenue fund. The most significant estimates in the financial statements are relating to the useful lives of capital assets. We had no unrecorded misstatements. We had no disagreements with management. We were not aware of any consultations that management had with any other accountants or auditors regarding accounting or auditing matters, and we did not have any other recommendations for your consideration. Sometimes, as we go through and review the internal controls, we may have recommendations that would either strengthen the controls already in place or perhaps improve operations, and as a result of the audit process this year and reviewing the internal controls, we have no further recommendations. So overall, very, very good audit results, and when we started the audit process, Chris and the team were ready for us. They had the general ledger closed. They were very, very quick to get us everything that we needed, and I don't say this to every client, but you really do have a top-notch business office, and they are very, very skilled in what they do. And they are often aware of the pronouncements and things that need to be implemented before they're even necessary to be implemented. So the GASB statements and different standards are already on their mind, and they're preparing for them, which is great. And as always, if they have questions, they don't hesitate to reach out to us, and we have very good open communications throughout the year. So just want to say thanks to Chris and the team for the excellent work they did and for helping the audit to be both efficient and effective, and kept us on schedule, and we were in and out in a very short amount of time, so we appreciate that. Any questions on financial statements, the letter, the overall audit process in general? Anything that I can answer for you tonight?
Sounds like an A+. Okay.
Jason, just wanted to say thank you. You got to us early on, and we, you know, as we shuffled through some of these COVID funds and some new learnings for all of us, it was a pleasure this year, so appreciate your grace and guidance as we went through the process.
Absolutely. Anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. Have a great evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity.
You too. Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
The floor is still yours, Chris.
All right, I'll jump right into the old financial update here, if I can jump over to screen two. It's relatively short tonight, so your year-to-date budget is included in the board packet. I did throw in the bond timeline. I know we're still a little ways out, but we've talked a little bit about the planning that's been going in to the architecture and construction, but I've spent a little bit of time with our, with our financial advisor to just talk about what, what the selling timeline of the bonds or the sale timeline of the bonds will look like. So I attached that. I don't need to necessarily go through it, but if you look in Board Book, it does show how we'll start the process, I believe, early February, and go through all the steps to be ready to sell the bonds in late May and have the funds deposited into our bank accounts in early June. So we'll have time before the end of this fiscal year to make all the transfers and things that we need to do. So if you have any questions pertaining to that, feel free to reach out. One thing, a few board members asked about, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, in case you're asked in the community, this is something that did hit the news. The Teaching and Support Staff COVID-19 Grants, so the state of Michigan issued a 250 or up to $500 grant for teachers and support staff that worked for the district last year. We have reached out to all staff members that are eligible and, and posted via email and on the website to the ones that were not eligible per the list from the state of Michigan to reach out if they have any questions, and if they think they are eligible, we can, we can work through that process together. So we're working through that right now, and those payments will be issued directly from Treasury in February of 2021. Those are funds that do not come through the district. We're not cutting the checks. We're not receiving the revenue at all. They're just, they're using us to notify, but they're doing it themselves, so that's kind of nice from the business office standpoint. The investments, our rate is down to 0.05%, which is the lowest I've seen it in my work as a, a finance director, so there's only one way to go from here, and hopefully it's up, because if it gets much lower, I'm going to have to pull our money out of my lap and just keep it in an independent bank. But hey, we're still getting a little bit of money. When I looked back at the past year, at this time last year, it was thousands. Right now, it's hundreds, but we're still earning a little bit. And then the audit report you just got from Jason, so that is all that I have for tonight, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, the only question I have is the, the fun, fun timing is, let me see, some date here. We're gonna bear with me. I have to blow it up, so I can see.
I think I have it right here, actually.
We're gonna, we're gonna request our bond rating, and we're going to receive our bond rating. Now, what information goes into determining what our bond rating is and thereby, you know, how, how demanded our bonds would be?
It's a great question. So the bond rating is really just, I mean, it's an all-encompassing call that, that I do with standards and pores, and they look at everything from our geographical location to the businesses in the district, to our, our general fund, you know, to past bond issues and our history of repayment. I mean, they really take a broad look. The economy, they take a broad look at everything that, that can possibly come into play in a, in a bond sale. So it's a, it's quite a process. There's a huge questionnaire that goes into it. I've done it in two previous districts. Jeff did it last year, Jeff Malik with the, with the refunding, so familiar with the process. I don't know what it looks like in the, in the light of COVID-19 or how that'll play, but I do know that, that, you know, you may have heard bond sales have been going phenomenally. I mean, the interest rates that districts are getting right now are just, I mean, record-breaking. So I have a pretty, and I spoke to Jesse Nelson from Baker Tilly. He's our municipal advisor on all this, and I said, Jesse, you know, any indications that once we get into the spring that the market's going to change? And he said, no, he doesn't see it changing that quickly, and we're still going to be in line for, for some really great results from this bond, so this bond sale. So it's quite a process. If you'd like, I can share any of that information. I mean, heck, you can either, even, even come to my office and sit in on the bond call with me if you'd like. They're kind of fun. It's like an interview, honestly. So, yeah. Not that interviews are fun, but they can be.
No, I just was thinking about our guest there and the audit that we did and how great that had become, and then we look at our, our fund, and we've got a lot of money sitting on the sidelines, and I just wondered how all that figures into all this.
Yeah, and honestly, you know, I've never seen the back end of it, but those are all questions that they ask. I mean, they look at all of our financial statements and how clean the audits have been. They look at the fund balance, because those are all indications of, of, you know, the fiduciary responsibility of the district, and investors obviously want to see that funds, whether they're general fund or debt fund or construction funds are being handled with care. So, yep, they play in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All good news. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our revised remote learning schedule with Jen and Stacy, and it is on for action tonight if, after they present to us. Keeping that in mind for our question time. And you have the floor.
Well, hi there. Jen, are you with me?
I'm with you. I shared my screen so that you can see our presentation, which is also LinkedIn Board Book, as is the final version of the schedule in a little bit more detail, but we'll talk through a bit of the why for why we are asking for this at this time. Stacy, you want to go ahead with this part? Whoops.
You bet. So the why, as you all know, we've been working through this since March, and so from the first day of COVID shutdown, we have been talking about how are we going to do this better and research-based and evidence-based, and we've been revising it ever since. So this newest revision includes our attendance guidance change from the state of Michigan. So we had to do some pivoting because of that. We have consulted with our RHO, our RedHawks online teachers, using their wisdom and experience over the last 10 weeks and building upon that. We've used some national, international research, research on ways, best ways that students learn online and ways that they don't learn online, and we've adjusted our schedule based on that international and national research, because people have been doing this since the middle of August. So we're using that research to make sure that we're doing and aligning things with that best practice research. And then we're also including, there's in this revision, teacher preparation in a virtual setting. It's a whole new world. Most of our teachers are really used to in-person teaching, and this teaching in a virtual setting, you can't just translate from what you were doing in person to a virtual setting. That's not how it works. It's a whole new setting with new tools, new instructional delivery methods, new timing. It's a whole new world. And then lastly, we want to set ourselves up for success with all of our planning. So that's why all those revisions today, based on all those pieces, and then all the guidance that we also read over the summer.
So we have decided to simplify things a bit based on some of the feedback that we were getting from our teachers and our family members. And so we combined our K-5 schedule to be in alignment across kindergarten through fifth grade. We've adjusted it so that it starts at the beginning of the typical school day, our normal in-person school day, rather than starting at a different time than that. And the instruction based on what was working well for RedHawk online teachers was a 20-minute morning meeting, a 60-minute literacy block, a 10-minute break, 60 minutes of math instruction, a longer midday outdoor rec and lunch break, and that outdoor rec break is asynchronously, so students can either watch something that their teachers are suggesting or get their wiggles out in any way that they're able to, wherever they might be. And then the afternoon is self-paced learning with lots of time for individualized intervention, support, and extension for all of our students. So one of the things that was important was that we were building in intervention time for everyone, not just our lowest learners, but also for those who are exceeding our standards and need to be challenged a bit. So that's the makeup of the day, and those larger chunks of time are not all synchronous time, but each time starts with synchronous time, so the teacher's able to check in on the student, make sure that they understand what they're supposed to be doing. In many cases, what our RedHawk online teachers are finding successful is then putting everyone into a breakout room, and then much like they would be wandering up and down the aisles or through the different groups of kids in their classroom, they're instead going and zooming to each breakout room to see how individual students are doing more privately than in a full Zoom like we are in right now. So that's the K-5 schedule. And then, there we go.
So then our daily sixth through eighth grade schedule. We have 25 to 30 minutes for each scheduled class, and that is very intentional. Zoom fatigue is real, and we've read research that says this, these kids, you're going to lose them. If you're doing direct instruction for over 30 minutes, these kids are going to fade out, and you can tell if you're on Zoom for over 30 minutes, you're losing, you're losing that focus. Even adults with, without ADHD are losing that focus. So 25 to 30 minutes for each scheduled class with that 15-minute break between class, so they can get up, stretch their legs, get a drink, go to the bathroom, quick take a walk, whatever they need to get that, that focus rebuilt, back in place. Then we have a 30-minute lunch, and then the afternoon, we have 165 to 170 minutes of afternoon self-paced instruction, scheduled groups or one-on-one support and extension for each content area. And what that might look like is we have kids who might need extra support, so we have intervention happening at that time, or we have kids who need, who are in that, in that bottom rung of students who might need extra support. And we have kids who might need extensions, additional pieces that they can look for above, above that grade level content for those extensions and that learning. And so we have 165 minutes to 107 minutes each day that we can incorporate some of those interventions, the small groups, those one-on-ones, and that extension in those afternoon areas, and give those teachers that time to really connect with kids and make sure that they are understanding the content that's been delivered in the morning.
This also gives our teachers a little bit more time for preparation, both at the elementary and the sixth through eighth grade levels, so that they can provide the best content that they can on Canvas and with the different platforms that they're using. So sometimes that afternoon time is also for collaboration, for professional learning, and then for the opportunity to do some additional planning.
And we have some really exciting professional learning that's coming up, coming towards them that we've really designed to meet their needs in real time in short little doses. So we're really excited to talk about the professional learning in a few weeks when that's coming out.
And then our ninth through 12th grade schedule. This is a 45-minute scheduled class for each normal part of high school schedule. The high school team decided to include their support and extension in the class period. So rather than have it at the end of the day, they're having it embedded in their daily class period. 10-minute breaks, which is a little bit more developmentally appropriate for more adult-like students. A 35-minute lunch break, and then 60 minutes of self-paced afternoon instruction. This is also aligned with our early-middle college students and with our KCTC programming, so that those students aren't missing out on that instruction with their class in their normal class periods. So that is the proposal. And we're wondering what questions you might have.
What about those kids who have like a dual enrollment where they're taking a college class, but they're taking it at the high school? Would that just fit into that same schedule in the same way?
Yep, we worked with the high school administrators to make sure that that was all aligned, Shannon. That's a great question, because that is an important part of our high school experience for many students. So that is all aligned, so that those experiences will still be possible.
The high school principals work really hard. They even had to work with the KTC principal to make sure, make a minor adjustment with the KTC schedule, and your Gavin from Transportation has been extraordinary to work with to make sure that we can get that transportation to and from, as has our food service, to make sure that the food service is being delivered, or not delivered, but accessible to students. So everyone is being so flexible and just ready to go.
So my question would be, if you've got multiple learners in the house, like Schaffners or Slagers, or, and if you don't have enough Wi-Fi connection or Chromebooks, who decides who's going to get the time? I mean, what guidance are we going to give the parent, you know? Or if the elementary person can't be on for the afternoon, I mean, all those variables. How does that work?
Yep, that's a great question, Heidi, and really important, given what the experience was like in the spring for our families. So we have enough Chromebooks that each student can have his or her own. They don't need to share, and there is a plan as part of our extensive checklist that ensures that all students who need one have the ability to take one home at the elementary level. Secondary students, of course, always carry those back and forth to school. And we know that there are some complexities about how a family's day might look, and there may not be the possibility to zoom in when zooming is happening. So part of the attendance guidance that we have from the state of Michigan is that that's not the only way to count attendance by being in a Zoom room. And so we're making sure that our teachers are also including that instruction on Canvas to be picked up by families. um, picked up by families at whatever time of the day or night they're able to do that uh, on a more asynchronous basis. And then during those afternoon times, when you saw that one-on-one support or those small groups, that's when teachers would be checking in more one-on-one with families they haven't seen in Zoom. Or they need to just correct some misunderstanding that the child has on Canvas based on the work that they've turned in so far.
And additionally, the lenses we use, we use parent lens, we use student lens. We met with majority of principals one-on-one throughout these, for this remote learning um, schedule to make sure that we're looking through all the lenses. And that's why K5 schedules are aligned so that there's not a different schedule for Cedar Trails, a different schedule for Beach, a different schedule for Cedar View, so that parents aren't juggling all those different schedules and trying to figure out which classes my student's supposed to be zooming in for right now. And then my other student is 22 minutes later. My other student might be 17 minutes later. So we wanted to really align those to, for ease of use for everyone.
Thank you. My other question would be, when you break out into the Zoom um, breakout rooms and the teachers um, going back and forth, is oversight an issue while they're out of the room?
Yeah. So depending on how the teacher chooses to use that as an instructional tool and what kind of positive behavior interventions they've set up and supports they've set up for expectations with their students. Um, what we're hearing from elementary teachers is that each child is in his or her own Zoom room. So they're not with other students unless they're being asked to collaborate on something. Um, and then at the secondary level, we would hope that our students would be collaborating on some things. So that would be no different than when you have kids working in small groups in your classroom, you'd set up the expectations and then help them to meet those with the right structures in place as a teacher. Um, but again, they can Zoom, they can have each student in his or her own room. So really, it's like the student is just working from home and the teacher zips in to say, you know, hold up what you're working on right now. Let me see real quick. Let me check in on that. Um, and then zips to the next um, room while that student continues working on his or her own. They're not necessarily all together.
Okay. And are we, do we have any recording policy or rules or what are we doing with that?
Stacy, do you want to talk about that from?
Sure can. So there are lots of views on recording and there are lots of perp violations that we have to watch out for. So we have
Not that I thought you should, pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt. So, okay, continue.
So we have to be very thoughtful and careful when we're recording videos. So we have suggested to teachers that they record videos separately and then they can show those during their live Zooms. Um, because recording students live, you have perp violations with student's name, you have discipline issues that you might, that might encounter then that becomes part of that student record. There are lots of issues and missteps that can happen. Um, lots of attorneys weighed in over recording student issues, their student student sessions over March COVID closure, and most of them recommended do not do it. So we have suggested and recommended in our guidance to teachers that they pre-record lessons that they want to be able to show students later. For instance, if students can't make it to their instruction, they want to be able to see those lessons later. So pre-record them so that they're available later on um, without students in attendance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions from the board?
We've also set PBS expectations and our student expectations and teacher expectations within our checklist. So teachers are going to review what those PBS expectations are right in the beginning again, so that we can refresh students that we expect the same behaviors that we expect when we're in person and we're in virtual. We expect you to wear a shirt. We expect you not to use profanity. We, all those same expectations. Uh, we expect the same thing in our virtual setting as we do in person. So those are expected to go, teachers are expected to go over those right in the beginning and revisit those often through our PBS matrices.
Okay. Any other questions?
So I thought it was discipline work. You know, do you, you kick the student off the Zoom meeting or how to, I just am curious.
You can, you certainly can kick a student off the Zoom meeting, but then that's counted as a suspension. And we only had a couple of those over March COVID, but if you are removing a student from the educational environment, that is counted as a suspension. So
Send them to the principal. I mean, how does that work?
So um, I would suggest muting a student first and giving them a warning. But there are office referrals and we've had office referrals over our March COVID closure um, because of some plagiarism or some profanity over Zoom. And then they send their officer for discipline referral to their principal and the principal handles it through, through the same methods that they would in person.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, ladies. Hopefully we won't need it all, but we're ready if we do. So, all right. We'll move on to public comment and this is the time in our meeting where we would hear from the community or anyone that would like to address the board for three minutes and share their thoughts, concerns or gratitudes. So Mr. Smith, have you received any notices? Oh, you're muted.
We have at least one individual with us tonight uh, who wants to uh, share with the board, Charlie Fallis. A high school teacher is here, so I'm going to open up his mic. And he can address the board. And then if anyone else uh, of the attendees want to uh, also address the board, if you could please um, give me an indication uh, either by putting a comment in the chat uh, or by uh, raising, uh, raising your hand, that would be great. Thank you.
So, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Well, I just want to say first off, thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you guys a chat tonight. Um, I'm so, so, so thankful um, to, to our, our board members, to our administration team and to everybody involved here in leadership roles for their absolutely incredible continued support of the, the wonderful band program we have here in Cedar. I'm very, very thankful for that. Uh, my intention for tonight is that we would consider rewording a current board policy that prevents um, teachers from teaching private lessons to our students here in Cedar Springs. Current board policy number 3231 section app states, staff members may not accept fees for tutoring, private lessons or other activities related to their professional duties for students currently enrolled or in one or more of their classes or on their caseload without prior written administrative permission. While I completely understand the intention of the policy, I believe it is currently unfairly limiting, limiting our students' potential to grow on their instrument. Our students deserve access to somebody with world-class training and exposure. Somebody who has been all over the world performing and learning from some of the best teachers in the whole profession. It's incredibly rare and difficult to find those characteristics in Kent County, let alone Cedar Springs. I have all of those traits and I'm willing to provide a high-quality growth opportunity right here in Cedar for our wonderful students. If a family decides that they would like to financially invest in their child's supplemental growth as a musician, they should have access to study with whomever they choose. In most cases, trumpet students looking for lessons desire to study privately with me largely because I already have a well-developed relationship with that student. We have a trust. We've already created an environment where they feel comfortable taking risks and pushing themselves to be the best they can possibly be. Additionally, the geographic accessibility I offer teaching lessons in Cedar provides a huge advantage versus any other qualified teacher that's likely going to be 30-plus minutes away. The content that's covered in a private lesson is completely divergent from a typical band class. We are working exclusively on instrument-specific pedagogy and solo literature and preparation for festivals and competitions, which are things we're not able to do in a band class with 50, 60-plus students. Conversely, I regularly meet with students during lunch or after school to help tutor them with their band class music where I would never expect to be paid a fee. My heart on this issue is absolutely centered on giving our students in Cedar the best opportunities we can. I can teach a middle school student from Rockford Weekly and pour my resources into their development, yet our own students in Cedar miss out on that opportunity. I've had countless students and families ask and almost beg to study privately with me in the past two years. And all of them ended up not finding a teacher or studying privately at all. I believe the intention of board policy 3231 is good, but the hidden effects are blocking our students' access to the skills our talented staff have here in Cedar Springs. Thank you all for your time and I truly appreciate your consideration and look forward to hearing about the next steps in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Fallis. And um, as is our power, the way we work through things, Mr. Smith will be following up with you on that.
Great. I appreciate your time tonight, guys. Thank you.
But we heard you and when it comes full circle, we, we have your piece of it. So thank you for that.
Of course. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Smith, you know where to find Mr. Fallis. So that's all good. Do we have anybody else that's indicated they wanted to speak to the board? All right. Having none, our emails are public on the website and we can be reached that way. So with that, we'll move on to our action item for tonight. And we have before us the revised remote learning schedule. So I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The motion carries for the remote learning schedule as presented. Thank you for bringing it, Jen and Stacy. So we'll move on to um, communication for the Board of Education. And what I have is upcoming MASB legislative meeting, uh, last chance, I think, to jump on a Zoom call. And you do get to craft um, and get your voice heard with what they're going to focus on. It wasn't too painful. Um, so if you were interested in that. And I did not attend the leadership, but I did look at some of their handouts. So did anybody else go to the leadership? Um, piece of the MASB this weekend. It was like a really nice weekend.
Yes.
You go, Tracy.
I did, I did. But I, I do confess, I, I ended up skipping one of the afternoon ones I planned on because it was so nice. It was so nice outside, but um, but no, it was, there was a lot of, of great information and, and the information is available. There, they did record a lot of the sessions. So they had some handouts and recordings that we will have access to. So I, I would encourage you to check some of them out.
Okay. All right. That's what I have for communication. Does anyone from the board have anything they need to share right now for? Okay. We'll move on to the superintendent communication. You have to unmute, mute Scott.
So I was just helping to um, give people the opportunity to practice up on their lip, lip reading skills. Um, because we know that that's a part of our learning moving forward. Uh, but I did just want to share a little bit of the background in terms of how we reached our final decision in offering the uh, communication specialist position to Amy Larson today and then uh, subsequently asking you to approve it during the uh, consent agenda portion of the board meeting tonight. Uh, it was an incredible task and uh, very robust, uh, very in-depth. We started with 108 applications. Matt Blood filtered through each of those applications and identified 21 individuals that we would screen. We went from that screening process down to a group of seven uh, candidates that we met with as a team. And we narrowed that group down to three and uh, met further with those individuals. Uh, at that time, they presented with us their reflections on our website, on our social media presence, uh, and also on a newsletter that we had sent out to community members back in May. And we asked them to reflect on those three items uh, using three different lenses. So one, the lens of what was, should, what should we keep doing? Uh, what are very positive things about those, those dimensions of our communication? What should we start doing? Uh, and then also what should we stop doing? Uh, and so uh, the finalists each presented their perspectives that way. Uh, then they also uh, shared with us their vision for the cover of the flight plan brochure uh, that we were excited about. And that's going to be a part of our early work with this individual. And then lastly, uh, we asked them to just summarize their uh, their reflections on our website, our social media presence and uh, our newsletter in the form of a one-page uh, draft that we would then um, be able to share with others. And uh, the conclusion of the, of the process, really, the the two finalists that we were focused on were both very strong individuals. Uh, will bring a tremendous depth to our team. Uh, but where we landed with Amy Larson was uh, an individual who has uh, multiple years of service uh, working in the community, in uh, in the communications world, uh, both in media, uh, but also in the private sector, working in a foundation. Uh, she's got several years of experience working at Disney. Uh, so she understands what that means uh, from a customer service perspective. And so we are very excited to uh, to start this. You know, you closed the, the book on one chapter, but we're launching a whole new chapter of uh, what we can take, uh, where we can take the communications of our district as far as next level work. So thank you for your support of that work and uh, for um, passing that recommendation in the consent agenda.
You're welcome. Okay.
I just wanted to, to say, I realized I was, I've been looking up a lot and it might come off that I'm rolling my eyes, but I'm not. There's a fly on my ceiling distracting me. So if anybody's watching at home or watches it later, not rolling my eyes, I'm distracted by a loud fly. So just wanted to get that out there.
Should I put that in the uh, communication section of the board minutes?
Well, thank you for that clarification. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You can put that in there as long as you use a small H when you spell her name.
You know, the capital H, sorry, the capital H is just habit when you have one in your last name. I apologize. I went back and I fixed it. I've been doing it for a while and I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Very good. So for planning, we have our next board meeting. Uh, November 23rd, a work session. I'm, I'm anticipating it is going to again be in Zoom. Uh, looking from uh, how things are going in our county and with our high school. Uh, in virtual right now, we don't need to create any more quarantine situations for the staff or for ourselves. But so that will be the plan I'm sure going forward. So that is it. And we will stand adjourned at 7:34. Thank you.